Don't mind, do you mind if I try to pin that?
Oh, no, you're doing it.
Great.
All right, thanks, Michelle. Okay, everybody ready? Am I recording? Okay, please join us in the Plague of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the republic and to the citizens of this country. Okay. Thank you, and welcome to the November 7th meeting of the Middlesmith Field Township Board of Supervisors. Make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 24th, but I, with one change, on the second page, on the minutes, where was it? On one of them, Mr. Stecker's name is, has a title on it. On the minutes.
Where?
Yeah, hold on a second, I found it earlier today. Was it common?
Would you acknowledge?
Well. Yeah.
We just, let's please, we are.
Yeah, which, which one was that?
On the top.
The 24, the minutes of the 24, right? Wow, Mark, you read that really bad. Yeah, there it is, so just with that once, one change, so.
What are you changing?
From Stecker to Steckle. Oh, there was, there was Steckle somewhere. Oh, here it is, here it is, page four, volunteer application to fill the vacancy, it says Steckle.
Steckle, there we go.
Found it.
I was doing B-Steffler.
That's in witness protection.
All right.
So we'll start with the minutes of, so, motion, you second?
Sure.
Seconded, okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, because I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion for the minutes, to approve the minutes of October 29th.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Pat, we have a report of executive session.
We've, the board met immediately before the meeting to discuss litigation in the state, no decision to make, no post-appeal.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? From anyone? Okay, moving along, announcements, there's just a couple. The board would like to thank all of the poll workers that worked on Election Day, so thank you for your service. We do have an opening for an elected auditor. We'd like to thank James Furiosi for his service as elected auditor for the township, but he is in the process of moving to another township. So that leaves an opening, we've accepted his letter of resignation, we thank him for his service, but we are looking for letters of interest, which must be submitted by end of day, November 14th, for that role. Budget season is upon us, you're all welcome to our budget workshop sessions, those are public meetings. We did schedule one for the evening on November 18th, I believe that's a Monday. You're welcome to come at 7:00 PM then. And as far as the budget, the press, formal presentation to the public will be on November 21st, and that'll be scheduled to be adopted on December 19th. Person of the Year nominations are now open, and they close next week. So if you have anybody you'd like to nominate for Person of the Year, we'd appreciate it if you'd get your nomination in quickly. Burn ban, many of you might have seen that we have a ban on burning, because it's been so dry, and that includes recreational burning, such as campfires, cooking outdoors, barbecue, and fire pits. In less than, we'd like to congratulate our zoning office and thank them for their hard work, because in less than a week, they have issued five citations with three citations pending. So pay attention to that. Mike, you might want to say a few words about the tree lighting?
Tree lighting will be coming up on November 30th. We'll have our, our usual fair, as far as the lighting, Santa Claus. We will be adding somewhat of a Pedlar Village at the community center from 3:00 to 7:00 on the 30th, to coincide. What do you call?
Kris Kendall Light.
Okay. Right, whatever. So that'll be there, like you say, from 3:00 till probably 7:00. So that's the new addition for 2024. Yeah, there's somebody gonna sing, I don't know, Gail.
Regina Sales. Yeah, so that's
Very popular.
Pretty cool. Regarding Revitalize 209, the latest now is Mobile Gas and the Big A have both started their jobs, they're power washing, cleaning, painting, and it looks great. So, I don't know, anybody else has any other announcements they'd like to, to me? I don't think, okay, moving right along, correspondence, I believe we have a piece of, oh, excuse me, you're right, committee and department reports. So, we have committee and department reports from each of our committees and departments. You can find them over on the side table, and they'll be in their entirety included with the minutes. So I would make a motion to accept the committee and department reports in their entirety as written.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And, you know, we'd like to thank also the Boy Scouts, Troops 87 and 902, and Andy Sasso for, and Francis Aquendo for putting on the Veterans Lunch for November 2nd. That was a, it was a christening for our kitchen over at the Community and Cultural Center, and it was a pretty good success, so I didn't want to neglect thanking him.
It was a long day for the Scouts, I think. I got some. They did the, I think they did Flags in the Morning in San Hill, correct? And then those that made it to the lunch, and that was another four hours, so the Scouts probably donated close to eight hours piece that day. And men over there, and ladies.
We appreciate it. So, and we have the next round of Hometown Hero banners up, so again, thank you for your service, for putting that up. Okay. Moving along, I guess that brings us to our public hearings.
Yes, correspond.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, I keep, I keep missing, I keep skipping ahead. Correspondence, I believe there's a piece. I believe that there's a piece of correspondence there regarding Public Works.
Yeah, we got a, just a, a letter of thanks or an email. President said 201 Drive On for tree work and soil work that they long awaited, so they, they say they truly appreciate everything that was done, and thank you, and have a great rest of the year.
That's terrific.
That's what I get.
And now, we're on to the public hearing. So we have two public hearings for tonight, one for sidewalks and one for a, and other things, and one for a noise monitor for short-term rentals. Uh. Just see if we got kicked out. Nope, we didn't, okay. All right, so I would make a motion to open the public hearing for amending the Code of Ordinances of Middlesmith Field Township by adding a new chapter, 144, right-of-way maintenance and acting rules and regulations concerning parking during winter storms, requirement of the maintenance, construction, and repair of sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, requiring maintenance of properties up to the edge of adjacent streets, providing snow and ice removal regulations, precluding the removal of healthy street trees, and requiring the replacement of street trees which are removed, authorizing notices to do work and inspections, providing for emergency repairs by the township, requirement snow removal of property owners, and prescribing penalties for violation.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, Pat, if you wouldn't mind taking us through this.
Sure, so this is a public hearing, it's been advertised as such pursuant to the Second Class Township Code. And this ordinance is exactly as Annette just summarized, it's adding a new chapter 144 titled Right-of-Way Maintenance to your Code of Ordinances. The proposed Article 1, the first piece of the new chapter 144 for right-of-way maintenance is specific to storm emergencies and parking during storms. So during a snowstorm or winter storm emergency, there are now, or will be, assuming the work received through the DOT and the ordinance, specific restrictions and requirements associated with the parking along public streets during those snow emergencies. And then Article 2 is the right-of-way maintenance piece to this new chapter. And it requires certain requirements of property owners abutting public right-of-ways, i.e. sidewalks along public streets, requiring the care, maintenance, repair, and replacement of those sidewalks, as well as the maintenance and repair of the vegetation trees along the sidewalks, as well as the removal of ice and snow during and after, well, more specifically after a winter storm from those sidewalks. One of the common questions is, well, how long do they have? This proposed ordinance indicates that the property owners have 48 hours to remove the ice and snow following the snowstorm.
Okay, so is there anybody that wishes to speak on this topic? I mean, usually we have a, a pad of paper and people come up and write their names, but there's such a small group that I don't think we need to do that. Yes.
That's only one portion of this book, you're referring, or about the entire?
I'm sorry?
That's only one portion of what, and that's just right, or about the entirety? Or you just went over?
I didn't read the entire ordinance, I went over, I went over through, like, bullet points, that, that, okay. Yes.
Question, you're right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
What constitutes a street tree?
So a street tree would be, I'm actually not sure. There's probably not many in.
Yeah, we, we kind of have a list of trees that we want developers to put there, when, when they come in with their land development plan, we have a specific list of trees, mostly natives. So that would be a street tree.
So are they trees that were in land development properties? For instance, Ed's property did not probably go through land development.
No.
Built it, so you don't have a list of those trees, you don't, you probably have nicer trees than those trees anyway, all right?
Yeah, you weren't required to, to do it.
So, is it this, again, the people that have trees that were approved in land developments?
Yes.
Otherwise, so.
I'm gonna read to you the definition, but what was just described to you exactly? If you have a, a house that's been there since, I'm not sure, the 80s, 90s, but it was in part an actual subdivision with street trees depicted on the plan, you likely don't have these street trees. It's the newer subdivisions that come in the door in the last probably five to 10 years, maybe even more, where developers are required to put in street trees along the street for these newer residential developments, or a newer commercial development, that is required to put in street trees along the, along the road, but within the right-of-way. But the definition for street tree in the ordinance is a tree installed or maintained in or near the right-of-way in accordance with approved subdivision and land, subdivision or land development plans in or in compliance with the township's zoning ordinance, indoor subdivision, land development. So. And what that's saying is what we've kind of described to you informally, is that it's really those trees that are shown to be installed as part of a subdivision land development group, plan along the street.
Hasn't that always been in existence? A land development plan requires a certain amount of
Correct.
Vinication.
It does today, I don't know if it, I don't know if it existed 20 years ago, but it does today.
And I remember the
Ten years ago, I thought.
And the land development?
Well, no, now, now, the, the bigger question is, it says removal and replacement of a street tree. Now, if for some reason the homeowner or somebody has a tree that's, you know, wherever, and it's deemed, that it has to be replaced, if there's a tree that's, you know, two feet in diameter, that can't be replaced.
Well, it, it would be replaced in location, not necessarily at that mature.
It wouldn't be an equally sized.
Correct, it wouldn't be as mature.
No, I can't, but if you take
Right, but if, if you write it down, somebody could want to enforce that.
But it's, it's, you're replacing, if you're taking out a tree between X and Y, and you have to put a tree in between X and Y. It doesn't have to be a, as mature, it's just that, and it says that even on your land development, it says that there
Gives the caliper.
Yeah, it gives a certain, you know.
Now, that said, in fairness to somebody that has a tree that, you know, is a decent-sized spring, but for some reason it has to be taken down, you know, that doesn't, it's not fair to say, you know, if that screen was, was shading something from your property, and it's cut down, and then you put up a tree that's, you know, it's gonna take 30 years to get almost to the same, you know, same size to, you know, the spring, the vision, the view through there.
Yeah, the, the land development
There should be some requirements that, if it's replacement, now, within region, you know.
So, it's all gonna fall back upon the saddle, so if, I'll read you, you're asking a very specific question, I think I found the specific section under maintenance removal of vegetation and trees. No street trees shall be removed by an owner unless such trees are fallen, dead, damaged, diseased, at risk of collapse, a danger to the public, and/or causing or anticipated to cause damage to public property improvements, and only then upon receipt of a tree removal permit and/or approval from the township. Okay, now that's obviously if the property owner wants to take the tree down for some reason or another. And there goes on to say, owners shall replace any tree, remove any street tree removed from their property or within any right-of-way adjacent to their property, if so directed by the township within the time period set by the township, and all replacement trees shall be of the size and species required by the township subdivision and land development ordinance, or street trees, and shall be approved by the township. So, there's, so, to your point, if you have a tree that's been there for 20 years, and was part of a subdivision plan, and it's a street tree, and it starts to die, and the property owner comes in and says, hey, and it's a maple, say it's a Sunset Maple, or Red Maple, whatever, and I hate, wanna take this tree down, township says, yes, you can take it down, but you gotta put in, it's not gonna be the same-sized tree, it'll be a tree from the list in the Saldo that, that if the developer will come into the door, through the door, and put in a subdivision, it would be from that list. Does that make sense?
And, and the caliper too, because I think on
Yeah, it's all, it's all like you said in the Saldo. That's not set in this ordinance, that's set in the Saldo. This ordinance is strictly, it's, there's nothing on the books currently requiring property owners to, you know, maintain those street trees, or to maintain the sidewalks along their property, or to remove the snow from the sidewalks, or, there's nothing currently in place, and that's what this ordinance will do. This ordinance isn't changing the caliber, size of trees that need to be planted pursuant to the Saldo.
It's a good question, though.
Well, we'll start with Revitalize, and I'll have more questions then.
I don't think we have a connection process.
No. Well, it said permit or approval from the township, yeah.
Except for my part, I wasn't. I don't think we need one more connection. And we put
Charlie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just for clarification, so I heard you say about trees in the communities, and I hear owner there, I think H O E would be more than likely responsible for those in communities. But what you just read kind of sounds like it's for outside communities as well.
Yeah, if it's a street tree, yeah.
So it could be something that wasn't planted in the last 10, 15 years, but possibly.
If, if it's a tree that was required to be planted by the developer in a residential subdivision, or a commercial subdivision, or a commercial land development plan, it's a street tree.
Okay.
Okay. And then, if it's within, right there, if it's within the right-of-way along the road.
And then, I agree, is, prescribing penalties for violation, is there gonna be something where somebody actually sees what those penalties are?
Yeah.
And how they, how they are.
It's very similar to every other ordinance in the Township's Code of Ordinances. Any person who shall violate or commit violation of any provision of this Article 2 shall pay a civil penalty of not more than $1,000, together with all costs and reasonable attorney fees, so on and so forth.
Each day is a separate offense. So it could stock up. I don't know, but it's out from all the
Yeah, I mean
So we had
You, you, you've asked questions about that specific provision, I, I will say, usually townships, this ordinance addresses a lot of things, but that particular thing is usually included, because the township, townships typically don't want, if they require street trees to be put in as part of a subdivision plan, they don't want five years down the road, the residents just start cutting down, or taking them out. You know, there's a reason why the township wants to
I mean, yeah, it used to be like, if you have a parking lot, you know, the, the ordinance should specify certain trees, you know, as, as shade, you know, just to keep the, you know, the pavements are getting hot during summer and so on, and, you know, and that, that's very, you know, logical, and, and, and it should be followed, but, and like you say, the, the, the developer, you know, five years down the road decides, or the owner decides, oh, I don't like them, and he cuts them down, there's nothing there.
That happens.
I mean, then again, too, some homeowner that, you know, lives in a rural area, and he's got a tree along the road, and, you know, it could, could be considered a street tree, but, you know, he decides it's objectionable for something, and he cuts it down, you know, it's a big tree, he's, he's in trouble. If, if the township was gonna make him, you know, replace it, but, you know, in kind, something very similar.
Most of the HOEs already created enough havoc with this. They, they created enough havoc with this already with their HOA, their, their own rule of regulations, because we cut one down, you usually have to replant two. So.
Okay, so we have, Mark, we have your change of eliminating the word permit, because we're not requiring a permit, it's
Well, I change, I'm always hesitant to change anything after I do advertise it.
Okay.
Where, where do I say? I mean, it does say
Permit and/or approval.
And/or, so however you do it, right now there's no permit, you just gotta get approved it, but
So, and I was leaving the winter storm park to the road mask, and Can we go back to, I didn't even hear what Mark had said about asking to change something? Can you repeat that? So I have that? Originally, Mark was suggesting where it says permit and/or approval to eliminate the word permit, because we don't require a permit. But because we have and/or approval, and that's all we're requiring, and Pat prefers not to change things after it's been advertised, it, it's not a big deal to, to do it, and the winter storms, ice and snow removal part, I was leaving to the Public Works Director, if there's any changes that you would like to
You know, because it's just noted about the other ordinances that we already exist.
Okay. So, does anyone have any questions? More on this?
So the, all the sidewalks stuff that they've been discussing, or it's
The roadways.
I didn't hear it, what did you?
The sideways, the sidewalk things become, you know, I just
That's, that's new, the roadway, parking, et cetera.
Bikes, and tolling, all of that.
The maintenance piece to this
Correct.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Requiring you, adjacent, immediately adjacent, abutting property owners to
Correct.
Be responsible for the maintenance of the right-of-ways.
Yes, Charlie.
One more quick question, so, if the council comes along and sees a tree that they feel needs replacement, would that, that become, that would be the homeowner's responsibility to take that tree down and replace it? If it was something that's big, or, you know, standing on a road or
If it was a danger, I mean, a township said you gotta take it down, yeah.
Oh. Sure, people, yeah. I know sometimes it's not like I ask questions or someone
No, 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 that's That's why we're here.
But, it just to be clear, for the sidewalk, if someone's sidewalk is 30 years old, and it's heaving and cracking and unsafe, the township will put them unnoticed, now, the town, I'm not telling you the township can't do the work on, on its own, but the property owner is, will be responsible to replace and repair that sidewalk.
The township won't do it.
I didn't want to be the person to say it, but yeah, it's, it's not beyond the property.
But we, we do leave ourselves in out. So that if the property owner doesn't do it, the township may do the work and collect the cost. Or we prefer not to. Are there any other questions? From anybody? Or is the board ready to?
Okay, so I think if the board, unless there's any other questions or comments from the public or the board?
How about, how about, I'm sorry, Pat, how about Zoom land? Is there anybody on Zoom that has any? I, I see, I see two people. It looks like, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to make sure.
Unless there's any else from the board, you can, I think it would be appropriate to close the public hearing, and then if you wanted to consider a vote on adopting the ordinance, it would be appropriate at that time.
Sure, I will make the motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Then I would make the motion to adopt ordinance number 245.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. The next, you know, do you guys want to open here?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open the hearing for ordinance number 246. So there was a motion, and Mark seconded, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the description is, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 150 Short-Term Rentals of the Code of Ordinances of Middlesmith Field Township by amending requirements for short-term rentals and adding provisions regarding the installation and use of a noise monitor on the property that would be on the outside of the, of the dwelling. So, Pat, if you'd like to
Sure, as Annette indicated, this is a public hearing, it's been advertised pursuant to the Second Class Township Code per such, and this ordinance is proposed to amend Chapter 150 Short-Term Rentals, and the board has discussed this probably a few meetings in a row. It's really specific to adding some provisions regarding noise monitors for short-term rental uses. First, it encourages, it strongly encourages short-term rental users to install noise monitors, which are defined in the ordinance. And then it also requires if a short-term rental, if the township receives two credible noise complaints from a specific short-term rental, that owner is then required to install a noise monitor at that property. But that's really, that's really the, the gist of the proposed amendment to Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances. And a noise monitor, as defined in the ordinance, is a sound level meter meeting the standards of the American National Standards specifications for sound level meters or other acoustical or decibel measurement device with similar capabilities and features that does not have a camera, recorded conversation, or store any personal data.
Yes, Charlie.
So what warrants you credible complaints, what, what, the definition of a credible complaint is to deserve
Deemed, deemed credible by the township.
So, does this, Mark, since Zoney? Since Zoney falls under you, would you like to address that?
Well, deemed credible, I mean, that's, that's, if you've taken, if you have video or the audio that you're gonna share with the zoning officer about an issue that happened at a short terminal next to you?
So how does one know what, what the thresholds are for credibility?
Well, remember, to start, they're just encouraged to get a noise monitor, right?
Right.
Uh, they're only gonna be required to get one after two credible noise complaints. The credibility is within the discretion of the township, and the reason it's in there like that is because everyone's different. I I suspect the township gets not necessarily specific to short-term rentals, but they probably get complaints from residents about their neighbors for a number of things, and not all of them are likely
credible.
Credible.
So you're gonna be the same decimal reading that it is for the other noise?
You keep saying decimal reading.
Isn't there a decimal reading, I understand, somewhere?
Not until there's a noise monitor. Right? Now, I guess if the township went out in response to a complaint, if it was during, if it was during daytime hours, then the zoning officer, whoever has it, or maybe whoever has a noise monitor can go out and take the reading, then maybe there are a decimal.
I was on the other thing, if there was already some level of decimal.
There there is. And that's from the property line. So I'm thinking the property owner probably would not put it on the property line, he probably would have it right somewhere near the house, I would think. I mean, because the zoning officer can't tread on the property.
Right, right, right.
So they have to go from the property line, so the decimal amount of the property lines probably gonna be different than what they are standing right next to the window. So you're correct.
Uh, I saw Ed's hand first and then Debbie.
Any thoughts on the mechanics on how your monitor enforce this? I mean, because, uh, most of the, uh, noise is not gonna come during daylight hours, it will probably be, you know, like two or three A M. And, uh.
What the what the noise monitor does, and they they sell them on Amazon, it's much like a, uh, an alert that you get for your tank alert, or your smoke detector is going off, or, I mean, my Alexa tells me that it's.
Noise from the decibels, whatever, recorded, so that the next day you can hear how much noise there was.
We're not asking for it to be recorded, but the noise monitor, wait, 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 excuse me. What the noise monitor does, it is, is it alerts the owner of the short-term rental property that who they rented it to is too loud. That gives them the opportunity to call their vacation renters to say, turn it down. So they are in control of that.
Okay, well, the, after the fourth or fifth violation.
Actually, it's only three. After two violations, uh, of no noise monitor, and somebody has to go out, and they have noise complaints, they have to install the noise monitor. The noise monitor goes off, if there's three complaints, they lose their permit. They lose their short-term rental permit.
Okay, alright, so that's a consequence, okay?
Yeah.
Well, if they're, if they're found guilty or violation, a bound by violation three times, it will.
Okay, well, how do you know what the violation was if you don't have some reporting? Because you're not gonna be there.
Good, because the neighbors complain, the the same way we have it now, they call here and complain.
Yeah, but just because they complained doesn't mean it's credible. How do you know if it's credible?
The township has to investigate. They have to go out and they gotta give it a turn a day.
Two A M, who have business.
You'd be surprised.
This is exactly what happened.
Couple requests I made recently, I was like.
That that's what happened with the burning ordinance, we got them all off hours and they went out and did it.
Different, that's not something you can report unless it's a forest fire or something.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm thinking, you know, well, the homeowner's gonna say, uh, you know, right, there was a complaint, but, you know, alright, take me to court, but what evidence do you have if it's nothing, if nothing is reported?
That's given, see, if it's at two in the morning, it's gonna likely be the neighbors are gonna have to come and testify, and they're gonna have to hopefully have something that recorded it, if.
And I would think if it's at two o'clock in the morning, the neighbor's gonna call the state police, they're not gonna call on township though. So the state police is gonna be responding, or.
Okay, yeah. We encourage everyone to create a record by calling the state police and the township.
I I guess, I'm feeling like there's no teeth in this, you know, it it's just all hearsay.
I'm feeling that there is teeth in this, Ed, because we've had, um, noise complaints since we've had short-term rental ordinances, and it has been enforced without the noise monitor. The noise monitor is just catching it earlier.
Okay. I mean, if if you if you pulled their permit to have it, that that's incentive to get on it.
But even without the noise monitor, we've pulled permits already for for a various complaints. There was garbage, um, that was one of them. One of them was over occupancy, where they advertised more a a higher occupancy than they were allowed, things like that.
And what, and what you're saying, it's noise enforcement is never easy. No matter, short-term rental or not, it's not an easy ordinance to enforce, because first of all, you need a decimal reader, and it's gotta be calibrated, and it's gotta be recordable. Otherwise, it's substance, so.
And even when you record it on your phone, I mean, my son did this to me. This summer, it was a neighborhood next to us, there was loud music, and actually, we found it was coming from a vehicle, not even from a house, and so I listened to the video that that he put together, it sounded like it was a counter in my backyard, not a car, I mean, I didn't find it so much, you know? So it's hard to tell from that, but like we said, and that said, it'll be up to the zoning officer or whoever investigates to determine.
Yeah, yes, Debbie. It's a good question, though.
Yeah.
But all we're saying is this is adding something to it.
I know, I know you you talked about a decimal reader. So will the township purchase something like that? Will you have a certified person to go out and use it?
The zoning officer has.
Will be trained.
Zoning officer already has.
Is zoning. They already have.
For other noise complaints other than other.
Well, no, I know in other townships, they they have discussed the fact that in order to hold up important, the person has to be certified to be able to do the use of decimal reader and have it, you know, certified, et cetera. So, and then would you encourage neighbors to purchase something like this in order to capture what their what their neighbors are doing, because if if the person who gets that alert at two in the morning doesn't call their renter,
Mm-hmm.
you know?
Well, I don't think they they record it all.
Well, some of them do.
But.
I think some of them do. Somebody, somebody who's really angry will buy the one that reports it.
And I'm thinking we had that issue in Pocono Heights, maybe, didn't we, in that?
Yeah.
Somebody did purchase their own to prove that I'm not nuts.
Right.
Everybody is violent. Here, look at my, look at my readings.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said.
They did that, they provided a video, they provide, and that was before we had this, and that was.
They were trend center.
Yeah. So the idea for this was while the zoning officer or the the zoning administrators are off, because it's after hours, at least somebody can address this problem right away, and our short-term rental ordinance has where somebody needs to be, uh, managing the property and available within fifteen minutes. So the idea was to solve the problem in fifteen minutes rather than Monday morning, you know, and the neighbors have this on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night. That was the idea, to try and provide this. Yes, Charlie?
I ask any employee by the township that is certified using the, uh.
That's the zoning.
But who is it?
The zoning officer that's using.
Um, Judy?
Judy, Sean.
Okay, Judy, I'm trying to work that.
Yes, Mia.
I just have a small statement I'd like to make, and then I have two questions. Um, I've been here a resident, I'm sorry, I'm I'm doing so many meetings, um, for thirty-seven years. My career life has changed since twenty twenty-one, when my neighbors in twenty years decided to sell, moved to South.
Retired.
Since that time, I've had two Airbnbs I'm finding right next door. One has already gone, disappeared with me there long now. I opened up communication with the owner, so that I would have a good communication. Um, didn't work too good the first two years. I want to say that she tried, but as much as she didn't wanna get that call at three o'clock in the morning, I didn't wanna have to call her because somebody was waking me up.
Hmm.
Um, it was numerous things besides noise and parties three o'clock, you know, guys six o'clock in the morning drunk out there on the porch. Um, this year has not been too bad. The only problem that I have now is I don't have neighbors anymore, and I had over fifty strangers this summer. Um, so I'm curious as to why the noise monitor couldn't be mandated for the short-term rental. And also, what is a credible credible complaint? I called the police, they told me they would come out, they don't quiet down, but they will come back again. I said, I don't wanna bother your time, not gonna do that. I started making my complaints to the township. I don't know, she told me she got a noise monitor. That has been slightly different this summer, except for one instance where a cooler was going off for over twenty-four hours. And if you heard that, you you all night long?
Yeah.
Yeah, so who would you contact after your company moving? Obviously zoning said, you know, they have to come out to, I have videos, I have fireworks going off, and, you know, and I tend to go off then. Like I said, I haven't had a problem this summer so bad, but I'm just wondering why you wouldn't make that something, I can't be, you know, I have complaints about short-term rentals, that it wouldn't be a mandatory thing that short-term rentals have. But.
Okay, well, do you wanna?
Well, I mean, we we did consider that. And I, I mean, I for one put up a burden to put, you know, the ninety-eight out of a hundred that are doing a fine job without. And, uh, maybe, maybe I'm wrong in looking at it that way, and I still think most short-term rental owners wanna be good neighbors.
And I understand that, but I fear she's gonna leave now that we've gotten it to a decent point in two years, and that she'll sell and then the next one will be there. And I have to start all over with another homeowner, not a neighbor.
Yeah.
A neighbor I would be talking to.
Remember, I'm gonna commend you for opening up lines of communications with your neighbor. I wanna commend you for that, because so many times, rather than doing that, people will just call the township and and want somebody else, a third party, to negotiate it, and they they don't talk to their neighbors at all, so I wanna commend you for doing that. Yeah, for it. So, uh, would the board be in favor of considering this to be mandated?
Personally, I mean, I I'd be happy to.
Instead of waiting.
Not access and and make a requirement, I mean, I'm more and more, I mean, I think these short-term rentals, you know, we have to look at just eliminating, quite honestly. I mean, it it's just a, it's, it's a headache for everybody, there's nothing good comes out of it. They don't, you know, uh, do anything for the economy, they don't do anything to their neighbors, they don't do anything, you know, to improve the quality of life, and and I think, you know, honestly, I just, soon they go away, personally.
Well, that discussion is for another night, right now?
Like I say, I think I I would certainly propose that, uh, we don't adopt ordinance two forty-six.
What would you like to see us?
And then make it, and make it.
Make it man.
At at mental, make it mandatory.
Okay, so you're in favor, Mike, of ordinance two forty-six making it mandatory for a noise monitor, rather than wait for two mornings?
Correct. But we can't adopt this.
Correct.
As a mandate, correct, that's what I'm saying.
But now's a good time to discuss changes. I mean, the public hearing is to hear from the public.
Okay, so we'll just make it mandatory.
So there's that.
So, so I I can, I can hear what you're saying, like make a mandatory, but we have a hundred and X amount of short-term rentals out there now.
Great.
How am I gonna, how do I go to those people and say, put them, put them on?
When you get your license, January one.
We're gonna need to.
You have to prove that you have a noise monitor, plain and simple.
So we'll need to see a receipt.
Correct, correct.
Uh, I saw Charlie's hand first and then this gentleman in the back. And I'm sorry, but for the minutes, would you mind if we had your name for the minute?
Yeah, absolutely. Bonnie Youngford.
Oh, you were on Zoom last time, I remember the name.
J U N G, that'd be her.
Nice to put a face to the Zoom name. Thank you. Alright, so I saw Charlie first and then this gentleman. Oh, he's referring to you.
Jason Weisler.
Hmm.
W I P, bestie, L D R. Um, I didn't come here, I'm scared. I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around the reasoning behind this, and I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding. The ordinance is written, if I'm understanding this right, is essentially trying to use the owner of the short-term rental to self-police.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I can't say that I agree with the idea of making this mandatory if it's not. It it's a completely separate issue from an actual noise complaint filed by a neighbor. The noise monitor, as you're describing it, and I'm kind of lead to hear it this way, um, isn't in any way used to enforce or qualify a noise complaint made by a neighbor. It is a, an aid to the owner of the short-term rental to say, okay, this will give you a little warning, give you a chance to self-police.
Right.
But then again, why would we mandate that? Why would we make that a cost on a citizen if it's in their own best interest? That's just an information thing to say, hey, our noise ordinance process is this.
Mm-hmm.
And at two strikes, you're gonna lose your permit or whatever it is for your, your short-term rental. We have had success with owners adopting their own noise monitors to nip this in the bud. But it seems like an overreach or a misalignment to mandate that you have to install and spend money out of your pocket, a device that is only going to help you if you choose to use it. Because we're not mandating certain, and this is what I was worried about reading this, was that you guys were proposing we're gonna install a noise monitor that the township is monitoring, which is obviously egregious breach of privacy in the last of this township, right? I guess my point is, what is the point?
The point is, the the owner is not on site.
Correct.
So the the owner will be notified to stay in compliance. So as you wanna call it self-police, that's fine, yet the objective i- is not to find people or pull their license. If they wanna have these short-term rentals, then they have to sort of police themselves and their renters that they're not upsetting neighbors or or those around them.
And I see.
I mean, if they're not on site, they don't care.
Yeah. I I think it's well-intended, but from a practical standpoint, I don't think the cost justified the intent. Again, if you want that, if if there was an actual benefit to the homeowner, they do it themselves.
Mm-hmm.
And if there's no penalty for not doing it themselves, then I mean, what, you know?
It's like, it's like a smoke detector, right?
It's not though.
It it is, and smoke detectors are required, they're required.
Life.
They're they're required by code.
Yeah, for protection of life.
Right.
At best, this is protection of income. And that's not really.
No, listen, but you could look, also look at it as protection of quality of life, so that's what people are.
The neighbors' quality.
Right, that's.
Which is what your noise ordinance system is for.
Correct, and we're we're saying now.
Nothing to do with it.
Well, it does, because now we're saying.
At what point does the the noise monitor on the short-term rental come into the case of the noise complaint?
It's it's meant to stop the noise when it happens, but.
I understand that.
So.
But that's a separate issue.
Correct.
From the noise complaint from the neighbor.
Correct.
And which is the only actionable thing that this committee could work with, I think.
But hopefully, it avoids the whole noise complaint completely, because.
I understand that.
Right. Right.
But we're not getting the code, your mandate and action on your citizen and your property.
Now, just to be clear, it's go, it potentially, whichever way this, whichever way this goes, it would be a requirement for someone to secure a license to operate specifically.
Understood.
If they wanna have the ability to operate a short-term rental in Middle Smithfield Township, they have to comply with all of these requirements in the ordinance. This proposed amendment to the already existing requirements would just be another thing that they need to do to secure the right and the ability to operate, to operate. To secure the right and the ability to operate, to operate a short term rental on their property. So it's not, when you say taxpayer residence, it's gotta be clear, it's only those individuals that want to proceed with this short term rental use on their property.
But they are a resident.
Correct, well, they don't property, why would you?
Assume most of the things you have in ordinance are for the safety of the general public and the safety of their home, this is not.
Yeah, but you have to look at, look at it as.
Shouldn't we be firming, well, I'm saying, shouldn't we be firming up the noise complaint process? Or.
The the only way.
Improving the response to noise.
It it's making the the owner accountable for their renters. That if the noise level has exceeded.
Through your noise.
Through a complaint.
All you're doing is giving them a chance to police before you get.
That's correct, and that's the whole idea, that's the whole idea.
With the two strikes and then you have to do it, okay, but to mandate that.
But what if you, if you got a liquor license, there's certain things you have to do to protect that license.
Yeah.
Okay, and and it doesn't affect.
Making sure that you're buying a certain brand of liquor.
But but there's requirements that go along with it.
Brand of liquor sold better.
But we're not requiring, you're not specifying, we're not specifying which meter you have to.
Okay, well, to be, to be clear, this. This is public comment, so, but but this board is very reasonable.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
No, I I mean, I welcome that.
I have a few questions. So, so, uh, cause you brought up an interesting point, that there are a number of requirements that someone has to have. In order to have the short term rentals, so Mark, would you mind running us through a few requirements? I mean, they have to have an inspection, and the inspection, what kinds of things does the inspection cover?
I don't have any of that, I don't have that.
It's like handrails, right? Smoke detectors. Yeah, yeah.
For life safety, they should be there whether it took, whether it's a uh short term rental or a long.
And it has to have a placard on it so that somebody can con, be contacted for it. Uh, yes, Charlie.
Sure, short term rental contract, is there something already in there? I I've had the uh, what I've made for our noise ordinance for non-short term rental perhaps. Where it gives you the special readings and the times and hours and the days. Um, is something like that in the contract for the short term rentals already, so that they know?
Certain things, I'm sorry, something like.
There's no contract with the township, the township has ordinance.
Okay, the permits, manage the normal order, when they get their permit to be a short term rental, basically to run a, run a business. There's a house they run out of. Um, there's already this, there's already these, these readings that you're supposed to have between certain hours.
Oh, you mean the noise ordinance?
Right, so this whole discussion is about noise.
Right.
Any particular noise coming from short term rentals as opposed to non-short term rentals. So we already have a non-short term rental ordinance. Are the people who are getting or purchasing these short term rentals, using them as a business, as a short term rental. Is this part of their permit, they're they're agreed that they will, they will follow the same guidelines as a regular, uh, someone, a regular. Resident in vital.
So let's, let's, let's begin, there are very specific requirements. In the chapter addressing short term rentals, which is separating the state from everyone else, the noise. Requirements or the noise standards in Middle Spitalfield Township apply to everyone, not just short term rentals, everyone. And I think right now, those are found in the zoning ordinance, the decimals, per district, per prop. Those are found in the zoning ordinance, and every property has to comply with that. So if a short term rental is operating and they're operating at a certain level that's above these decimals, that's what they're enforced against.
Right.
Okay, there's no separate list of decimals for a short term rental, they.
I I think, but what, that's only my question, my question, but in short term rental permitting prob, uh, process. Are they given the these readings, and they're beginning to show them what they need to be at?
No, because then we'd be giving them also, uh, here's the part of our ordinance that discusses what your property has to look like. Here's the property maintenance ordinance, here's the, like, the same rules reply, apply to everybody, so.
So I come there, I want a short term rental.
Mm-hmm, I don't hand you the whole code book and say, please follow all the rules.
Means that's true, because you have to do it as a homeowner.
Yeah.
Right.
So you don't have the whole code book.
I understand, I, I wasn't.
Yeah.
But noise is such a big issue with it, maybe putting something in there about noise, like, all right, well, you need to do our readings.
Well, and and.
That's what this is.
That's what this is, and that's also, and it's also, our permit's gonna change slightly to include references.
Right.
Okay.
But really, and and I don't wanna discount what you're saying, but really. Once once you turn a short term rental, you're not a resident, you you're a business.
Yeah.
Okay, so to say that, you know, we're 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 not hurting residents, we're hurting, and it's not meant to hurt anybody, quite honestly, but. Now, now it's for a business, so there's certain requirements, when you turn your house into a business, there's certain requirements you have to have. I, like I said before, I'm not in favor of any of these things.
More or less.
Uh, but.
The point is, is that as a township.
Right.
Our responsibility is not to the health of the business, our responsibility is to the health of the occupants of the citizens.
Correct, that's correct.
Does not provide safety.
It's 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 not a safety issue, it's a quality of life issue. It's a qual, no, it's a quality of life issue.
We're not responsible, like, I don't, I don't want my township, my board. I I don't live in an HOA for that very reason.
Right.
I don't want people telling me what I have to have in my house so that I have a certain quality of life.
No, but.
I don't want someone to tell me I have to have a new couch because my old couch is very.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that's what this.
But there's certain, you you have certain requirements incumbent upon yourself. To maintain the quality for your neighbors.
So does the owner of the short term rental.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
The owner of any property has to, has to follow that.
And and rather than go through a whole legal process, which is costly for everybody. Okay, we're saying that, like you said in your words, they can self-police themselves in some respects. They get notified, they call their tenant, say, listen, you gotta quiet down, you know, we're way over.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, it seems like this council has adopted. An attitude of offering a stick that doesn't have any teeth, when they could be offering a carrot, a he-man. You're getting a permit to do a short term rental, right? That is the obvious time to explain to them, in our county, in our community, these are some of the issues we have seen with short term rentals.
That has, that has, sir, that has already happened.
Some of the things you could do to make sure you're on the right side of it.
Right.
It's very different than saying, you have to install a noise monitor.
But we've done exactly what you said ever since we started offering short term rentals, exactly what you said, we've been doing for years.
So, why the change?
We're improving it. We are improving it.
This has been, this is a little bit beyond my limit, but the 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 purpose of the ordinance, it it's pretty straightforward. The the board of supervisors is trying to improve the the operations of short term rentals throughout the township. There's nothing wrong with that, they're able to do it, right now, the way the ordinance reads is you're encouraging the short term rental owners to. Enough to install one of these monitors. In the in the event that there's two significant complaints, noise complaints, it turns into a requirement the next time around they come. Uh, for a short term rental license, that's what you're looking at, it's proposed ordinance, now the question is. After that in-depth, back with discussion, does the, do you want to? Adopt it, do you wanna table it and reconsider, do you want to, I mean, this this is up to the board.
This right, we've had a public hearing, and we've heard from the public, and a member of the public has said, why not make it mandatory? So we discussed it, and a member of the public has said, no, I don't think it should be mandatory, and this is why.
Well, and and in respect to to everyone who's who's commented and and listening, you know, all sides. Um, I think, quite honestly, now, I I have changed my feeling in some respect. That this is a a common ground to encourage first and then mandate. Um, rather than just not doing this and mandating from step one. Um, but I will stand by the fact, or may statement before, that I I would like to get rid of short term rentals.
Well, that's a whole separate discussion in a separate meeting, this is not the platform for that.
Not, it's not a platform, it's not, there's, there's no speech.
All right, so now, where we are now is the board's come full circle to ordinance two forty-six as written.
And I will make a motion to adopt it as written.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, we gotta close the public.
So are there, are there any more comments from the public? Seeing none, are there any more comments from the board?
Well, wait a minute, let's see, is there anybody on Zoom? Uh, there's James and there's, well, actually, James has had short term rental uh experience. It, James and Naya, anybody have any comments? Sorry, I just wanted that.
In the chat.
Oh, there we go, short term, so. James writes, short term rentals are businesses, they pay taxes as hotels do, zoning is not twenty-four seven. And most of the parties happen at night and on weekends, I own property in Monroe Lake, and we ban short term rentals. As our deed restrictions do not allow commercial activity. The noise monitors seem like a step in the right direction, especially when state police aren't always able to respond. And have more urgent matters happening. Hopefully, there will be more efforts to crack down on short term rentals that do not register with the township. Or make themselves known to HOAs. And actually, James, to address that last part, it's in the works, um, the township is considering a contract with. What is that company, it starts with a D, with a company? That's it, Deckard Technology, which um is able to detect short term rentals that have flown under the radar. Right now, we do it the old fashioned way, the zoning administrators um. Search all the short term rental sites and then say, that is in our township and I don't have a permit for it. And they go out and 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 get it, so thank you, James.
They have gotten really good, the short term rental owners have gotten really good, they know that they should only maybe advertise on weekends. So the website comes down Monday morning, goes back up Friday night.
But the.
And those type of things are going on, so this uh Deckard Technology has really.
And it would pay for itself, because the permit fees that we would get, more than pay for adding Deckard Technologies. Yes, ma'am.
So what do you do with, I have a uh Airbnb behind me, and it's like a six or seven bedroom house. And they make so much money from just one night, I think it's like six hundred dollars a night. And they said, when they get their fines, they'll just keep paying the fines because they're still making money. Is there a point in which you crack down on that?
You lose your permit after so many.
After three.
Cause they just, the house sold, and then the person who bought it was told that there are no, our HOA just implemented as of October, no more. H uh Airbnbs, but he still bought the house, plans to rent it out. Um, and it's, they have wild parties all the time.
Well, that that becomes a problem with, you know, some other thought of of uh. Doing away with short term rentals altogether, we go to the wild, wild west, they'd still be out there, we just wouldn't be regular. That's what, that's what this person doing in your HOA, I'm assuming you, they said you can't have them anymore, but they're gonna do it anyway. So it'll be a court battle, so maybe it'll be a court battle of the HOA, it's a fun, so go that route.
Yes, Charlie.
They're already moving things apart, um, so she just mentioned a short term rental selling to a new person, that new person has to commit to an old application. Am I correct, or is her? Or she committed to an old application?
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
And the permits expire uh every year, so they have to get new permits, and how often are they inspected?
For, well, they're inspected every, every year.
Year with the new permit.
Yeah. It's a, it's a huge lighting inspection, but it's enough to ensure that.
And obviously, if something, if the noise ordinance we're talking about tonight, if they're, you know, keeping track of that till they come in with their permit, if they have X, Y, Z. Complaints, that would, that could possibly hinder their permit being renewed.
And and I believe that that, you know, the zoning office, the way we have it set up, and they go out and do those inspections. If it was a prior short term rental before, the comment might be, you know, made. You know, we had people here before, they were, we never heard a word out of them, or this has been a problem property in the past, hopefully you. Hopefully you were to improve it.
So, is there any other uh questions or comment from the, from the public? Okay, so then I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? And I'm sorry, ma'am, could I have, would you be okay with giving us your word for the minute? Christine Donner Stecker?
Yes.
Oh, okay, it's nice to meet you in person. Okay, so is the board ready to vote on this ordinance now?
I'll make the motion.
Any comments or questions, uh, all in favor of ordinance two forty-six?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, that was a healthy discussion.
That was even.
All right, so that brings us to the treasurer's report.
We make a motion from our general account, two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Any comments or questions?
I just note that it includes insurances for twenty twenty-five, that's why it's so high.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion from our sewer account, sixty-four thousand eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
I'll second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for our liquid fuels account, uh, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye. Motion for workout, got six hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
And that includes the court finding and the bill for that.
Motion uh from our firing mess, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Any comments or question, all in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for the robust discussing on the public hearings. It's always nice to know that people are interested and thoughtful and come out to your meetings. Yeah. And provide input, so thank you. All right, that brings us to the solicitor's report.
Thank you, the first.
There's another condition you see.
Yeah, the first item on my report is consideration of all the conditional use public hearing. As the board is likely aware, you received a conditional use application, uh. Which requires us to schedule a hearing, uh, currently, I think I prepared the uh. Public notice uh for the hearing to take place at your. December nineteen, twenty twenty-four meeting, seven o'clock, I just wanna make sure the board is okay with that before we run that out.
I'm fine.
December nineteen?
Yeah, the meeting on December nineteen.
Sure.
Yeah, I believe that's our.
That's our meeting.
Budget, no, no.
No, that's just a doubt.
Wait, December ninth, yes, the adoption of our budget.
I have one meeting in December.
I know.
So is the board, the board's okay with advertising that for conditional use as well?
Yeah.
The next item on my report is the ordered grain motion for the transcript of the board request. My office was asked to uh. Secure a copy of the transcript from uh the hearing from November twenty twenty-two for the, for purposes of getting a court approval toward the sale of golf course. Uh, the board approved that request, and we just need the three hundred and seventy dollars to purchase the transcript. I just wanna make sure the board's authorized in that, and it looks like you are, it was in your bill.
It's in your bill, it's the one just to prove the the bills, so thank you very much for that.
Uh, the next item on my report is the proposed resolution to extend the LERTA, as the board may recall. You have asked me for a while, probably a few months, actually, probably since January twenty twenty-four. To try and get the school district and the county to start the process of extending the LERTA another ten years. Uh, I sent, you'll see from my draft correspondence that I circulated to you. I sent both solicitors for the county and the school district in January, and then again in April. Uh, inquiry, and I haven't really heard back substantively. Uh, so the last work session, I was authorized to basically prepare. The resolutions for the school district in the county for purposes of extending the LERTA. I've done that, I've drafted letters uh for the solicitors, and I'm, I I'm assuming it's on the agenda. I I asked that the board specifically authorize me to send it, if I'm gonna send it.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would make that motion, unless anybody has any changes to this letter.
Sure.
Uh, any comments or questions, yes, definitely. Yes, definitely.
I, I just make the suggestion that, um. Perhaps someone speaks at the board meeting, unless you are not on the agenda, but you should probably ask to be on the agenda.
Well, then, yeah, so the next steps were, we, we wanted the letter to go out, not just for us to show up. Um, for it.
I heard.
Yeah.
That they got the letter.
Oh, okay.
Heard that there was a letter, so.
Oh, after board meeting?
Well. Maybe in the second session.
All right, well, what, uh, so you're thinking. The December meeting?
I, I would just think you should contact and then, unless you're, it's not on the agenda. That you should, because we meet the eighteenth. So.
Of December.
The eighteenth of November, we meet the third Monday night.
Just, just so it's clear. The LERTA, the timeframe for the LERTA expires July twenty-twenty-five. So that's likely why.
Ten years before, or five-year extension for letter three.
Yes, and we're asking it be extended to twenty-thirty-five, now that it expires in twenty twenty-five.
A five-year, in other words.
Same as before.
Okay, I just wanna know when, what I said is what? Because I had a comment, so.
It's a ten-year.
Some of them didn't understand quite what that was.
Well, we're prepared to come present, we're actually excited to do it, since the, uh, school board members have changed. And I actually grabbed a few figures. Um, since the LERTA was adopted, and this does not count the value of AutoZone, I just wanted to do a back-of-the-napkin thing. Um, but the value, the increase in value from. Uh, vacant land to adding things, like the Dollar General was built, the AutoZone was built, the apartments at Mount Nebo was built, Tractor Supply was built. Um. I don't, I didn't have the figure right away for, uh, AutoZone. But the other three, uh, just the improvements on the property added up to somewhere in the neighborhood of eight-point-seven million dollars. So because that property improved or increased in value by eight-point-seven million dollars. The amount of taxes those properties are now paying has increased by almost two million dollars. So that means the school district, the county, the township, and now fire and EMS, now that there's a fire and EMS tax. Are all sharing in this extra two million dollars a year that we may not have gotten. And many of these, uh, in fact, all of them have sent us something that said, the one most demonstrable being Tractor Supply. Saying the reason why they picked this location is because we had this. We would not have the apartments at Mount Nebo had we had not had the lift.
I don't agree with it, but I'm just saying.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Promotes it a little bit better.
But we would like, we would like to come to a meeting with this, cause I'm sure they're gonna say, how, how has this experiment worked? How has this benefited the taxing authorities that granted this? And that's how you are now receiving collectively an additional two million dollars a year in taxes, cause these things. Are, these businesses are in our township.
Okay.
You know, but anyway, if you're saying, so you're saying November eighteenth would be a good time to go and pass.
I would say you should call in time to be on the agenda.
Okay.
Or ask why it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Okay, so there's been a motion to send the letter? Or did this go out already?
No, I was holding.
That's what, that's what, yeah, so there's been a motion to authorize you to please send this, has there been a second?
Sure.
Okay, a second, any other comments or, I think there was, cause I asked for comments. But remember, are there any other? Huh? You guys did, yeah, okay.
Different comment before you did it all.
Right. All right, all in favor? Okay, thanks, Pat, for the patience. Appreciate it.
Um, the next item under my report, I'm actually gonna suggest. Uh, if you wanna wait, I'm still working through the formatting and. Waiting a couple other innings, I just sent you, I just sent you. I just sent you a three-hundred-page document yesterday, so I don't know.
We have such a captive audience.
It's up, it's up, listen, it's up to the board, uh.
Just kidding.
It's up to you guys.
Well, no, 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 we have the noise nuisance ordinance, we have the.
I know, I, before, before I went to that, I wanted to make sure that the board's on board with that, with that.
Yeah, motion to table.
I don't wanna take charge of it, if anybody wants to read this.
This is just under a court, so there's no. Well, actually. If you have, if you, if you have time tomorrow, if the board wanted to discuss.
No.
Uh, so. And then the last item under my report is the proposed noise ordinance amendment, and I thought maybe. That would be better, wanna talk about a little bit because of the way the conversation went tonight, so as the board.
Is there a monitor involved?
No, there is not. Uh, as the board may recall, when we were look, when I was looking at your code ordinances to see where the noise requirements are, they're in your zoning ordinance currently. So there was discussion whether or not to put. The noise, for noise provisions within the, uh, nuisance chapter. Of the code of ordinance, which would be chapter one or three, or I'm sorry, twenty-three, six nuisances, so that's what this. Draft ordinance does, and just so everyone's aware, this isn't a public hearing, this is up for adoption tonight, this is simply a draft, uh, after a discussion at the last meeting. Uh, so you'll see this ordinance starts with, uh, Article Three, Noise Nuisances, it's Article Three for the existing chapter on nuisances. Uh, and this new Article Three would be specific to noise nuisances. You'll see there's a section on definitions. And then there's a section on the, uh, decibel readings, that would be. Within the threshold of permitted levels. Those decibel readings are spec, that we took them straight from, well, I should say, the first table. The first table we took straight from the zoning ordinance, okay? What I will say is you may want to think about, discuss, and maybe even reach out to Sean and or Judy. To see if they wanna suggest maybe playing with some of the decibel readings. Uh, eighty. Eighty. Specifically stuck in my head for, um. Other areas that aren't in numbers one and two, eighty's pretty high when I look at other, when I look at other. But I'm not a noise guy, so I, I would just maybe suggest talking to Sean or getting their two cents before you.
I remember back in, back in the day, uh, at the lot line of residential use, you have sixty decibels and then fifty-five decibels from nine to seven. That used to be fifty dec, those, each of those used to be five decibels lower, it used to be fifty-five and fifty.
Like I said, I didn't change these.
Yeah. And they, and they, right, and a prior board changed it to sixty and fifty.
So, but, I mean, you, you see fifty-five, you see sixty, sometimes you see sixty-five, eighty, eighty seemed, I, I don't know what the past, I don't know what the history is on that, but.
We'll hear.
That's why it's maybe, maybe. Reach out to Sean or Judy to see if they have any suggestions, but I do know that's a little higher than most. Ordinances that I've got.
Yeah.
Uh, so, that's probably, that'll probably be an expression point for you at some point. The next table, it's, the next table's not in your current. Oh, and before we move on, if you change anything that's currently in your zone.
Yeah.
It would make sense to within the zoning ordinance as well, to make it consistent.
Right, right.
And then the next table. The next table is permissible noise level above background noise level. So there's a way, and again, I'm not a noise engineer, but there is a way for them to measure. The noise level above background noise level. And those decibel readings, if you wanted to incorporate such an additional. Uh, restriction in your noise nuisance section.
Be similar to like the pool one she's talking about. You know, that it's repetitive, but it's not a constant noise. Above background.
This seems more like a machine noise, like an air conditioner, a generator.
Yes, so back, if you look at the definition, listen, I don't wanna get too lost in these, but if you look at, there is a definition of background noise.
Right.
Background noise is the total noise from all sources other than a particular sound that is of interest. So, you're at, this is maybe more in the city, right? But what, what's your background noise up here, you got.
The generator.
Generators, you got. You got traffic on two oh nine, you got, you got things going on, so, so that second table.
And heat pumps.
Is a way to somehow measure noise that's above the background noise. Right? And you don't have that currently, you don't have to have it, I just thought I'd plug it in for you guys to talk.
No, I think it's good because we have seen, we have received noise complaints for generators.
Okay. Uh, and then.
People run them constantly.
So, those are the sections specific to. Where there's. Objective readings of decibels, right? And then like any other noise ordinance you get into, um, there's a definition for excessive noise prohibited, and excessive noise is more of the subjective type. Uh, and then there's specific provisions where you're talking about, you know, an, an animal that's, uh, incess, incessantly barking for a period of like ten minutes or. Um, operating, playing or completing the operation or playing on a radio, television, audio, so and so forth. Uh, loudspeakers, amplifiers. Um. You know, certain time, certain times restrictions on the operation or construction, uh, operations or activities. Uh, horn signaling devices, obviously, except for emergencies, heavy construction equipment during certain hours. It looks like it's restricted between the hours of eight PM and seven AM. Uh, and then there's, there's an exception section. Uh, which takes you through a number of the exception, exceptions, now. There are a number of the exceptions that we pulled from. The existing zoning ordinance for Middle Smithfield, but there's probably others that we could pluck from other ordinances that make sense. Uh, so what does the, what's the board's pleasure this evening, what do you, do you wanna go through it, do you wanna?
I have an appetite, I could do it.
Again, this is.
No, do you want to give it to?
Well, one of the questions to ask, uh, my questions for zone, yes, the pack could take us through the zoning. Through this if he wanted. Um, but for Sean, the questions are the decibels. Um. I, my question for zoning is, of the noise complaints they've received, what classifications are there? I know we receive dogs, I know we've received generators, I know we've received loud music.
It's in exceptions, and the number one one, and then exception.
Right.
Which ones are licensed game hunting activities and fire endangerment, you don't property will subject activities are authorized. Right, that's the biggest one. So how do we determine? Whether the property involved or to have a fire.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Ed, I'm sorry, I was making them.
Uh, since you're not completely reuniting a wheel, are you familiar with, with, uh, Smithfield Township's new ordinance, they just passed an ordinance not too long ago? And maybe having some comparison between the two, so you're somewhat together on the, on the, you know, two. Two ordinances.
Thank you, that's.
You want to make an effort noise ordinance? Yes.
Thank you, Ed, that's a good suggestion.
Your specialist seems to be on.
Oh.
Your specialist there.
I saw another hand with.
That was just me imagining there's one of them.
Oh, okay, all right.
Do the answer better than the one.
All right, so do we wanna enable this for tonight?
Yes.
Ask Sean these questions and put it on the next agenda? Move already?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and one, one thing to make very clear. A shooting range that is in existence. Prior to. A township adopting a noise. Ordinance. You're, you can't adopt the noise and shut them down, they're entitled, there, there's a state statute that protects a shooting range.
Correct. It was, we talked about shooting, correct, which we do not have.
If I decide to shoot over my property, well, that then is authorized shooting.
Right, we don't have anything that exists like that.
You're right, that's different.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, great.
And if, if we're gonna wait to go through that, then that's the last item under my. Report unless the board has other specific items or questions from you at this time.
Okay. Thank you for. The solicitor's report.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so there's no, uh, engineer, no engineers report, no old business. Um, there's one piece of new business, um, so we had to do the emergency declaration and ban, uh, burn ban. Um, that we did, so I would make a motion to ratify the emergency declaration that was passed November first. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
So. The declaration, the declaration was done pursuant to this statute. It was done for a period of ten days or the next meeting whichever person occurred, so that's this. So in your motion, do you want to include a timeframe to extend it?
I would consider con, extending it for another, um, seven days.
Well, I would.
Or, or, would you wanna do it?
I, I would.
I would do it, it's down to our next meeting.
Okay, all right.
So you can, so if you wanna continue to extend it, you'll be here to take the action.
To the next, yeah. Twenty-first is our next, nineteenth. Well, two more meetings after tonight. So we could extend it to November twenty-first.
I, I would.
And then take the action again then to extend it if it hasn't rained between now and the twenty-first.
Okay.
Mike?
If we get a lot of rain, does it automatically expire? Nope, yeah, continue.
And pay fine. And pay a fee. It's just.
We'll have a special meeting.
So, so you were making that motion, Mike, that we extend this to the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Or am I adding that to the motion that was just made?
Doesn't matter.
You can.
Okay, I'll add that to, I'll add that to the minute I just made, and I'm assuming, Mike, you seconded it.
I'm sure.
Okay, any comments, other comments or questions? Uh, all in favor? Okay, so is there any public comment on anything? Yes, Charlie.
This is your proposal, I know it's not, uh, it helps to do what we talked about tonight. One of my biggest concerns on short-term rentals, in the overall picture of them, as a child advocate, the first concern about who are bringing into our neighborhoods that may have questionable backgrounds. We don't know anything about these people that are coming in, they don't know if they're registered sex offenders. Or anything like that, I think it needs to be more determined than done, and not pretend it may happen tonight, that's one of my concerns on that. That world, that business.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Uh, yes, Christine.
So I'm not good at public speaking, so I've been having these ongoing issues, so I just wanted to say, um. I've listened to the proposal about trying to alleviate noise complaints regarding short-term rentals. I would like to know why nothing is being done to help those who live there permanently, dealing with noise issues from other permanent residents. It would seem that you should want a solution for both permanent owners as well as short-term rentals. I've read the noise ordinance, I know one hundred dash zero four zero, that was the table of continuous sound levels, hours, days, and sound level limit in decibels. Since you have these ordinances, why are they not being followed through with and given advice to those who do not follow said ordinances? Since twenty-twenty-three, I've been dealing with constant noise issues from the neighbor directly behind my house. They have no trespassing signs, posted on the property, as well as dogs tied to their porch, so I did not feel comfortable going to speak with them directly, which is something that I know that you appreciate. I'm not taking a risk. Um, I have communicated with. You through email, Facebook Messenger, Judy, email, text message, and Lyra phone through email. During the correspondence, I've included screenshots of decibel readings using Decibel X, which is the app you guys told me to use. For many of the various dates and times my complaints. Um, one of it was either Memorial Day or Labor Day, um, of twenty-twenty-three, I texted Judy with yet another complaint. She said she would take a ride by the house to see if she could hear the music. She did not approach the residence because of the signs of dogs outside. So she called the homeowner and they were combative and stating that they retired and can play music as loud as they want since it's their home. They also brought up that this was a race issue, which I'm not sure how that came to the conclusion because they had never met before, so Judy had that issue with them. Um. She did come to my house, into my backyard, she witnessed the noise firsthand. She commented that she would not be able to live like this if her neighbors did that. She went to the property line and took a decibel reading and said that it was above what it should be. She advised me that a letter would be sent to the homeowner to keep the noise down. Even though they got the letter, they still continued on the following weeks to play the music at an excessive level at prolonged periods of time. I contacted Judy again with decibel readings, dates and times. Judy said that she would send a warning letter and that the next step would be that if she don't find. The music continued throughout the remainder of the warmer weather and it made Judy and Lyra aware of it every time it happened. Nothing was ever done after that point, the only time we got a reprieve was when the weather changed. Fast forward to this fall and they've been blasting the music again from afternoon well into the night. I emailed Judy on September thirtieth to let her know that it's. I emailed Judy on September thirtieth to let her know that it started back up again. I did not get a response back, music continued throughout the month of October. On November first, I emailed, I emailed you and it. Since I still at this point have not heard back from Judy from September thirtieth. And you did respond and you forwarded my email to Judy, so she then contacted me later that day. And she said that her inspector were headed to a property made contact, like where was that the house? She emailed me later on saying that she spoke with the owner and that he was told to turn the music down. And she said she cannot force him to comply, unfortunately. So I'm extremely upset how this entire thing is being handled, the lack of communication. From Judy with the first email, then after complaint to you and it. Um, and which you said you'd reach out to me and you never did, and then it was passed to Judy. It just seems like nobody wants to do anything, and the can just keeps getting kicked further down the road. So, if you have to live with this. Um, i- it's just unbearable, and then today, I emailed, uh, Judy again. I have the decibel readings, today it started at three thirty, I left to come here at six fifteen, it was still going on. When I was in, I'm in my house, all of my doors closed, I was in the shower. With an exhaust fan on and a water running, and I could hear the music. So, the decibel readings, like today. Was seventy-two point five, now I'm on my deck. And their property line is a hundred and seventy-five feet from where I took that reading. So that reading was seventy-two point five, going all the way down to the back, you can just imagine what it is. So, I just don't understand why. You had said that there are fines, there should be fines, but each ordinance has a fine, why are they not being fined and why is this something that is just? Being kind of pushed to the side, because I, I just had enough. Um, on the taxpayer, I'm not a short-term rental, we live here all the time and. Nothing seems to be working with these people, and it's just, okay, we issued them a warning, there's nothing more we can do, that's not acceptable.
When can a citation go?
I mean, it's the first time I've heard about it right now. I'm, I'm not, so, so did you have any other complaints in twenty-four up until the thirtieth of September?
Uh, over the summer, I sent. Uh, but twenty twenty-three was like a constant, and, and Judy was working with it, and at that time they were gonna be fined, and now it's. Well, we, I, I gave them a warning, and there's nothing more we can do, we can't make them comply. So, we have ordinances which are set here of the decibel readings. And sixty, and they're well above sixty during the day, and. When this first started. And I contacted my H O A, it said contact state police. Well, state police wouldn't come out because it was during the day, it wasn't after hours, and then it was contact your, uh, your township. And then the township contacted the H O A, so it was just a big runaround and I, I just really. The other day, I actually had to leave my house, so I got peace and quiet, I shouldn't have to do that in a house that I'm paying taxes for. So I just would like to know what you're going to do about it, because I just feel like it's all on my debt years and I'm really getting tired.
Can you issue a citation?
Well, like I said, I think first you gotta, yeah, they gotta, they'll follow up with the. It's, the, right now, the noise requirements are in the zoning ordinance, so they're gonna have to follow up with the zoning officer to. I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not, no, no reason to question, you know, what you just presented to the board. I, I don't need to see it, but we'll need to reach out to Judy or the zoning officer who was in, involved in the investigation and see if there was a violation. And if there's a violation, where it's at, and if it's still in the warning process, okay? If it's not, maybe it's ripe for a notice, maybe it's ripe for an enforcement notice, which would be the enforcement piece of the zoning ordinance, but. I don't know, I don't know the facts, other than what you just presented to this board. I, you presented it, and I think, I don't think these, these board members know the specifics of that case, so I think.
There were a couple times on Facebook, it was like eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, I saw her on Facebook Messenger and I said, it's still going on now. And I get, you can't come out at that time, but since twenty twenty-three. Something should be done, and now you're saying like, okay, well, we have to see where we are in an issue, this should have been taken care of last year.
Every time, every time you've sent something, I've sent it to zoning because this is a zoning issue.
That's just for our occasion, this is one of the issues that I had bringing up previous meetings, so, so the first time this has been brought up. First time you're meeting in person.
Oh, I mean, the person, the name, I mean, I'm gonna be as good as Michelle's notes right now. With the, you know, I, I know, you know. Name now, and I can question that based on their name.
And you actually read it.
I have, I should have the contact information from the email Christine sent.
I, 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 I'm, I'm all together with you on the noise, because I'm telling you that noise that my son heard, and I've heard several times through the summer. Comes, the bass rattles the walls of my house, and this is, and the next development down the street.
So now.
This is the next house.
And not to bring up the whole, the whole issue there, but. If you're, if you may require short-term rentals to get a monitor, if this person, it's been more than two offenses. They should have, because it's.
But there, but my understanding is that's not a short-term rental.
No, it's not.
So, a short-term rental, they, they're asking for a license to operate a short-term rental. If they're just a permanent resident, it, we don't have any ability, we can't require people that aren't.
Okay, but what happens, you have these ordinances and they're not being followed, so.
Well, it's an enforcement issue, if, if they're in violation, then, you know, we gotta follow up the zoning officer.
But they've been in violation since twenty twenty-three, now it's.
You're telling me they are, and you're telling me they have.
I've had.
But there is a, there is a process to determine, number one, whether or not someone's in violation, if they are. Then there's a process, if, if there's a warning letter that goes out, okay, if they do it again. There's a process to file an enforcement notice, and they could appeal it, they, it could, it could get drawn out. I mean, this is not an overnight, granted, noise is like. Someone who doesn't shovel their sidewalk, it can be fixed quickly by turning off the music. But if it's a constant, every other day, every day. It's gonna take, it, it may take time to get it before a judge to issue a decision against them.
Right, but I mean, so last year, Judy was out at my house, and she, she heard it firsthand, she had, she went down on the yard, she did the decibel reading. And at that, I think just a warning letter at that point, and then we had other issues, which I made a net aware about, and okay, this is still continuing. And I would send screenshots of the decibel reading, so why wasn't anything done then, what's the why?
I'm gonna say it again, no one at this table knows, we. We don't know the, what's going on on that particular case with the zoning department. You're letting us aware, I'm assuming we may know the locations, so we'll follow up.
I did know. And I sent it to the zoning officer, and I can't, I can't go out, I can't go out and.
Right, but then it just seems like it just got dropped and now it's starting again, and. The weather's been nicer, so.
I completely understand your frustration, especially in nice weather when you open the windows and then it's really loud.
You know, when my house is closed, it's like, you can feel the vibrating, so I just would appreciate something being done. I know that. I don't know, she just said that she told them to lower it.
So I have your email here from August tenth of twenty twenty-three. I sent it. And on Wednesday, August ninth of twenty twenty-three, I sent it to Sean. And anything from, I bet you if I searched for, because I copy and paste the things I get in Facebook Messenger and send it to.
And then for September thirtieth of this year. I sent it right to Judy, and she never even bothered to respond to me.
Well. I, I, I'm not, I'm not defending Judy here, but I know she had some major surgery done. And she was down in the loop for about three weeks. So I don't know if she wanted to have her emails forwarded to somebody else, or if somebody was responding on her behalf, but I, I'm. I know what, you know. I'm not really interested in talking about it, but I know she was out, out of service for about three weeks.
Well, I wish I could, someone could keep me updated as to what's going on, the progress of it, it was just to hear, okay, they were told, but I can't do that to enforce it. So.
Well, uh, well, and to be quite honest, when there is an investigation or if we do proceed with an enforcement notice. Unless we're gonna have you come and testify, uh, you may not be.
Let's say, I said we typically don't get back to the complaint.
Yeah, we do, you, yeah, we're not gonna keep, we're not gonna keep you in the loop unless we call you and say, hey, we have a hearing coming up, we can testify.
But if my name's not released to, to the homeowner as well, okay.
Yeah, and as a supervisor, I, as supervisors, none of us can enforce any of this.
Ordinances, if they're not gonna be followed.
I don't know, the board supervisors can't enforce it, the zoning officer, if there's a violation, the zoning officer, nor, listen. The township's not gonna go out there and every resident that violates slap them immediately. They wanna be a good, you wanna have a good board, you wanna have a good township, so normally, there's a warning letter that goes out. And if they continue to violate it, and when I say continue, I mean, if they're in violation. Then there will be an enforcement notice, which is the next step, the enforcement step. And they have thirty days to appeal that, and if they appeal that, and if the zoning ordinance, it goes to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board will hold a hearing to determine whether or not they were violating the ordinance. If they don't appeal it, and they don't fix it, and they can continue, and they, they continue to violate it, then we file it. Probably start before the district magistrate, and try and get them to stop, and just fix significant fine, right? If they don't, if they don't, if we go to the district magistrate and we're successful and they get able to find them, they still don't. Stop, then maybe we file an injunctive action at Court County Common Pleas to get an order from a judge saying that you have. I mean, there's a whole process, this is not an overnight thing, and I said it earlier tonight. Noise ordinances are not easy to enforce, because what's upsetting to you with respect to the level of the noise might not be. I'm just saying, it's not easy to enforce, it never is.
But you said before, you said eighty decibels is high?
When I'm looking at.
That's what it's at a lot of the times with them, and I'm, like I said.
When I said high, I mean, when I look at these noise ordinances, it's usually when I see the limits, eighty, I don't know if I've seen eighty, so. But that's not in the residential district, that's in the commercial.
Right, but imagine having to listen to that all the time, so, all I'm saying is, it's been over a year, I think the proper steps. Should have been taken because there have been so many complaints, so I would hope that it would have been further along at this point, and we wouldn't be having this issue.
Well, maybe it is further along, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
I'm saying, I, I don't know whether I would.
Well.
And, and, and the situation, your situation, Pat's is frustrating, that you're going all the way to the Court of Common Pleas. It's not overnight, it's not next month, it's not, it's, we're talking mid twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and they're made of that, of course, none of us, I have not been involved, I don't think I've been involved in this particular case, and. It could have, sometimes the code enforcement, they feel comfortable, and they'll go to put the district magistrate without me, and maybe they did, maybe it's already been there. But you're not gonna get notified unless they want you to come and testify. It's not their place to continually keep you in the loop on their ongoing investigation.
But I can understand what you're saying, because from where Christine is sitting, she's not seeing anything happen. Things may be happening underneath the water, underneath the surface of the water, but from where she's sitting, she's seeing nothing. Happening, and I under- I understand that.
As a couple hours ago.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's probably still going on now, but I just don't feel that I should leave my house for peace and quiet, I think that.
Yeah.
Something needs to be done, and that's why I'm asking.
Under, that's understandable, and I'm, I'm sorry for that, and we'll. Find out tomorrow. For Sean, when this is.
Sounds like my son's dad, aren't you gonna go down there and do something about it? I can't. I can't go down and do something about it, any more than anyone of you can go down and do something about, we can, we can start an altercation, we can, you know.
Well, and I completely understand, whereas you can go speak to your neighbor, you, you're not in a safe place to do that. Or a sa- you don't feel safe doing it, I understand that. Alright, any other, uh, public comment, and thank you again for taking the time. And going into the deep end, it's appreciated. Is there any other, uh, public comment for this evening? Anyone? Yes.
I don't know if we guys just run away as soon as.
No.
And that does, she always stays for the.
Oh, no. Okay, alright.
I can motion to adjourn.
I'll set it, any comments or questions, all in favor? Thank you, everyone, for attending. Appreciate it, thank you, Zune, wanting.
Thank you, Gil, for your opportunity.